Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin tonight's Select Board meeting. It's April 21st, 2021. And this is the Brookline Select Board meeting being called to order at 6:31 PM. I'd like everybody to take a look at the agenda that we have posted. Is there anyone who would like to change the order of the agenda?
Dot?
Yes.
You didn't put in the discussion of the cleaning of the office.
I actually saw that it was for, um, in the minutes, it looked like it was for May. But you can talk under the, um, your building.
Under the, under the building update?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all right? Okay.
I kind of got to get back to that guy to let him, to, to tell him what we're thinking.
Right. Okay.
Dot, can I just, um, I just want to add a couple of quick things, maybe at the end of Old Business about Green Day.
Right, you know what?
We won't be meeting again. And also the salt sand shed.
I did forget to do that on here. I'm sorry.
They'll both, they can, they'll both be pretty quick. We could just put them maybe at the end of Old Business.
Okay, let me add that right here. Old Business, salt, sand shed. Green Day. Okay. Okay, um. All right, so now we'll move on to scheduled members of the public. The first one on our agenda is Joseph Dutton, who is going to, who sent it, who met with Doug Wellman and spoke with Cynthia Now about the $5,000 grant that has not been used for the round schoolhouse. So, uh, Joseph, are you there?
I am.
Okay. So you want to tell us a little bit about what you and Doug saw and what your thinkings are?
Yeah, so, um, how's it going, everyone? First and foremost, the Preservation Trust of Vermont, if, if all of you aren't up to speed on this, who we had had a grant with quite a while ago. We spent some of the money, but we still have, uh, $5,000 left in that fund there. They contacted us and let us know that we need to spend that by August 1st, or they're going to, um, reallocate it somewhere. I actually just forwarded the letter that was sent over to myself and Miss Now. I forwarded it to all of you, so you can read it if you would like. Uh, the only stipulations along with that $5,000 is that it just, it needs to be, uh, for the round schoolhouse building. And it needs to be in keeping with the, anything that's done with the money needs to be in keeping with the historic nature of the building. He did say, though, that that leaves it, um, our options pretty broad. Uh, so Doug and I went and looked at the round schoolhouse and, uh, thought about some ideas to use that money. Um, one thing that we think needs to be done and, and won't require, uh, much of that $5,000 is, uh, the windows, which had, there's five or six of them. I can't remember. Uh, they need to be refurbished, pretty much just like we have the windows at the, the Brookline, at the daycare being refurbished now. Uh, and, and it's actually a little less intensive than those windows. They're not in too terrible shape. Uh, we are guessing that it'll be about $1,000 to do that. So that's, that's something that, uh, we think would be worthwhile spending the money on. And then, um, with the remainder, well, I guess, so I, I spoke with Miss Now, who was not at our, our little meeting. And, um, Miss Now agrees with, with the windows, that being a good, um, use of some of the money. And, uh, this, I suppose, is a question for Bruce, but, um, probably Bruce. Is there any more work that needs to be done regarding the, the beetles?
Um, I'll answer you directly with that. Mark and I went in, I would say, three weeks ago. Um, and it was as a result of me calling the guy that cleaned up the place two years ago, Joseph. And I had noticed more powder post beetle holes in their last four that were never cleaned up. So Mark and I went in there, and, oh, well, I also got instruction from him how to do it with the linseed oil and painting and, and doing it anyway. So Mark and I went in and did it. That was about three weeks ago. Um, the only way you can tell if, if they're, if they're concluded, if they're done, is if you, it's really easy to, it's like somebody took a, uh, a very fine drill bit and filled a hole into, into the wood and you got a bunch of powder there. That's, that, that means you got powder post beetle in that spot. And the way you rectify that is by, um, by using the linseed oil on it, which is what Mark and I did. Um, so the direct answer to your question is, I haven't seen it in three weeks, but if, if you, it's kind of like you have to keep up on it until they're gone. Uh, it wasn't that bad, but there was some left and we took care of it. But then we got to, because it kind of, we can see to see if they come, where, if they appear again. But, um, back when, as you know, two years ago, when we did it, we did it quite thoroughly. We had the guy come in and do, do it quite thoroughly. He did a good job, but he lived, um, but there's more to, uh, that, that answers your question. I don't want to go on further than that because you have other things to talk about. Then I'll, I'll respond to, I'll respond to suggestions that you're making because Mark and I really looked at the building quite thoroughly.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that is, uh, is almost a complete answer. So just to double check, so pretty much what you're saying is that we don't really need to spend money to have the powder post beetle problem addressed in a professional manner.
No, no, it's under control at this point, unless we get some kind of an outbreak, which we shouldn't, because he not only bombed underneath it, but he completely exterminated the entire place and had to close it up. And, you know, I forget exactly what he did, to tell you the truth, but your dad, I remember that. And he also, he also did the linseed oil on all the holes. And then when I noticed more, I called him back and he came back and showed me what to do. That was, I want to say September, maybe, somewhere around that vicinity. But, um, no, I always say my guess, educated guess, is that it's under control at this point. There's other things that I noticed, but I'll let you finish what you were talking about and then I'll spew what I think.
All right, so that, so that was one of, um, Miss Now's concerns was just if we needed to spend money on that. And all I would say, it seems as though we probably do not. And another one of her concerns was just checking in because she wasn't a hundred percent sure, um, everything that was used when we first addressed the, the powder post beetles in, in terms of extermination. She wasn't a hundred percent sure if, if it was in need of any sort of, um, uh, cleaning in a professional sense to, to make it, um, completely safe, like in insurance eyes for, for people to be using the building again?
Uh, the direct answer to that is there should be no problem now. Um, linseed oil, after, it goes away after about three weeks. I did it on my windows in my kitchen here in my house. And I'm still alive, haven't been sick in 10 years. God, thank you.
She was more concerned about not just the linseed oil, but, uh, anything else. And again, I, I don't know about, uh, she was just concerned, um, and I told her I didn't think this was a problem because I know you have been in there with Mark. But she just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to, um, like have someone like Surf Pro come in and clean it.
Well, uh, to answer that, I did have Surf Pro come in. This leads into an entirely different discussion, but I'll cut to the chase, Dot. Uh, this also has to do in conjunction with cleaning the town office, but I'm not going to get into that. Uh, but he also, he was supposed to give me an idea of giving me ideas of how to clean the place up. Because right, right now, the place looks like a mess. And he looked at it really closely, the guy from Surf, Greg? I forget his name, from Surf Pro. And like I said, just a second ago, he didn't give me any kind of a quote on what to do with it. Mark and I were alone looking at it and we had come up, has, has March appeared? Is he on?
No.
Pardon me? Not yet. Uh, and basically, we had come up with some ideas. And one is a thorough cleaning, one is, another thing is to treat the wood. Uh, I think your ideas about redoing the windows is not a bad idea, but we have one problem with that, Joseph. And that's getting someone to do it by August 1st. Uh, knowing what I know about these painting contractors, um, Mo Momini's had our bid since last.
Well, Bruce, can I, can I cut you off real quick?
Yep, absolutely. Go ahead.
Right on that topic. So Doug, um, well, I guess to finish up on, on the other piece, that, that answers Cynthia's, uh, questions. She just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to spend money on, um, anything that was not tied up. Now, moving, moving into what we had talked about, myself and Doug, and I filled this out in and, and she was happy to, to agree with this. Uh, the windows, Doug has spoke to Norm Holden and he did say that he was a little busy, but, um, he, he believes that if we were to move forward with this, he could get it done, uh, prior to August.
Oh, good. Okay.
So he is, he is a little tight and we would have to, if we wanted to spend some of the money, um, on the windows, which again, we, we haven't gotten a quote yet, but we would expect it's around $1,000. We would have to, um, we would have to solidify it relatively quickly and, um, get someone like Norm to, uh, to kind of get on it so he can get it done and we can, uh, use those funds prior to August 1st, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you'll have a problem getting him to come over and get, get in your bid real quick. As to how he lines up his agenda, I have no idea. But I'll tell you, you remember, he, it cost us $500 a window for, windows for, for, uh, for, um, for the windows in the school.
See, I, I think these windows are going to require, uh, a lot less work.
Oh, sure. Mark and I looked at them quite thoroughly. They're nothing like, like the school windows were, not even close. It's, it's not going to be much work for him at all. He won't, most likely won't, he won't have to take them out. He can do them just as they sit, I'm pretty sure, I'm speaking for him. But the, like I said, the kicker is if, if, if he says he thinks he can do it by then, we, we should act on it quickly. Agree on it, act on it quickly and let him know, because I know him really well, and get him to commit himself, knowing that the funds are not there after August 1st. I guess that's the best way to put it. I know you kind of said it to him, but just say the funds are not there after August 1st. So if he wants to do them, let us know or we're going to have to, um, I don't know, Mo Momini can do it. I would really doubt it. That boy is a busy man. He's got a lot of work. Yes.
Let's, let's move on a little quicker here.
Yeah, okay. I understand.
I have, so that kind of, um, that's one of our, one of our main suggestions is, uh, the windows. And then from there, we, uh, figured with what money we have remaining, it might be, uh, a good idea to contact a, um, like a professional, uh, carpenter that restores old buildings, someone like, uh, uh, I believe Chris Parker, someone local.
Yeah.
Who does that. And, um, you know, if we have $4,000 left over, that would go a pretty long way in, um, finishing up some of the, uh, the half-started, uh, projects to do with the shed. Um, there's, I'm sure, uh, most of you have, uh, seen the shed there. It's in, uh, disrepair, but it's really not that much, uh, woodwork that needs to go into it, just a couple beams here and there, uh, a couple boards replaced. So we were thinking that that $4,000 would go a, a pretty long way to, um, to fix a lot of those problems.
Yes, it would. I just wanted to make a point. You, you, you mentioned that, uh, that, that the grant had to be spent on the round schoolhouse itself. I guess what I'm asking, knowing these people and have that experience with them, how, I think you should talk over the specifics with them to make sure that you're under the same understanding of what you're doing, because you might find yourself short if they've, if they mean just the round schoolhouse.
Yeah, yeah. I understand, yeah, what, what you're saying with the shed not technically being around schoolhouse. I, if the board would like, I could certainly, uh, double check, uh, with the, the association to make sure it's okay. But I'd be, I'd be pretty sure that they would be okay with us using the funds to restore the, the outbuilding.
That'd be good. And one last thing, because I know Dot's going to kill me if I go on any further than this. A thorough cleaning would be a good idea. Covering that, that, uh, flu hole would be a good idea if somebody's painting or something and re-treating the wood. Those are just some ideas that, that Mark and I had, uh, that when, when we discussed it. Um, a cleaning service could come in and do a real nice job, but if you can get the money to do the outbuildings, that would be good too. So that's it for me. Otherwise Dot's going to hang me. All right, Dot?
Um, Joseph, I, I have to concur with what Bruce said, that, uh, I think a good cleaning, washing, washing down the walls and woodworks are all, should also be considered part of the, the job. And I do think since the shed is attached and the outhouses and all that went with the school, I, I hope that that would be considered one project. My other concern is the humidity levels that are in the building and some of the very old important books that are there from the 1900, 1904, 1902, and such. Um, and I know electricity is not part of a historic building, but being able to dehumidify that building, especially in the summer, I mean, we can open windows now, but that was something that the board had talked about a little bit. And I'm not sure if, if you're going to talk to them about the shed, would you ask them about electricity? If, if it's something the Select Board needs to set aside money for in a capital improvement to do that? But I do think we need to be able to, uh, dehumidify that building on a more regular basis in order to preserve the interior of it. What do you think, Joseph?
Well, uh, addressing the electricity, I, I know that myself and Doug and Miss Now all, uh, believe that it would be a mistake at, at this time to put electricity into the building. Um, in terms of, uh, like the humidity levels, uh, affecting the books, Miss Now herself told me that, um, she's not even sure if those books really, uh, belong in, in the round schoolhouse there. I don't, she's not sure if any, any paper or book or anything in the building was ever used, uh, as, you know, as a, a school material while the, the building was, uh, was being used as a school. But, um, yeah, I think all, the three of us are, are pretty adamant that we wouldn't really want to see electricity in the building. Um, I know that, I'm sure some of us know that there is some old electric stuff that's hooked up, coming through the shed. And there was electricity in the building for a short time, but that was never when it was a school. That was only, um, uh, after it was, um, sold to the town and, and used as the, uh, town office. I don't know the exact date, but my guess is.
Oh, I didn't know that was its office.
My, my guess is the electricity never even got there until, uh, the mid 40s. But yeah, it, there was never electricity in it when it was, uh, a school. Um, so it doesn't, we feel it doesn't really fit the, the historic nature of the building, because it, you know, it being a historic schoolhouse, not a historic town hall or town office. But, um, yeah, that, that's something that all three of us, um, just, we didn't really think it was the right step at, at the moment to try to put power to the building.
Another, another thing is I talked to Dopier about that, because I had Dopier over here yesterday, actually. But before that, when they were there, here a couple of weeks ago, Sean from Dopier, I had a, for a look at the building. We tried to figure out what was going on there. But he pretty much agreed, we couldn't come up to a conclusion. There were pretty much, if we do that, there were, we're, we're starting from scratch. Might have to have a pole put in, the, the juice running across the street. So, um, I'm not go aware of what the cost would be, but I'm sure is, we'd eat up that $5,000 or pretty close to it, pretty easily.
All right, so Joseph, where we are right now, would you contact the, um, the people with the grant and talk to them about, um, the shed? And, um, I guess we need to write up a request for proposal for, um, the painter and.
Maybe a cleaning service to come in and clean the place? Maybe figure out some help that would come in for a fee and, and linseed oil or put some oil on the wood? There's a lot of things, well, it's only, well, April 21st, so we got a little bit of time here to figure out what to do to the building or find people to do the work that we are interested in doing.
Bruce, would you work with me in developing the request for proposal for that project then?
Doing what?
Yeah, well, I'm not, uh, this is a question that I don't really know the answer to, but would we even need to kind of submit, uh, bids for this? I know that.
I didn't say bids. I didn't say bids and, and I see Stan wants to talk, but I didn't say bids. I mean, a request, we need to know what we're asking for. We need fixed windows, reglazing, uh, screens, whatever.
So just like a job, job statement, kind of?
Right.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I think it'd be really a good idea if we just spent, well, that we, we're not until May 5th until our next meeting. Um, for Joseph to really get clear from the state exactly what we can do and what we can do, can't do to the building. If it was reported back to us in the first week of May, then we can go out of full tilt boogie. But in the meantime, our biggest concern is going to be getting people to do it. We're getting right into May and people are going to say, September, September, and we're out of luck. So just, we're lucky, Norm will work with you if he can, but as of anybody else, I can't speak to that at all.
All right. Uh, Stan, did you want to add something? I saw you.
Yeah, if I may, um, going back to my prior experience on the, uh, Select Board and then my involvement in the past with the, uh, Meeting House Committee. Uh, at one point, the representative from the Vermont Historic Preservation came down. It was a young lady and she was escorted by the person that she was replacing, who was retiring. And it seemed to me that there was a requirement of that original grant, that the money be spent for the roof. And it had something to do with a roof cap, possibly. And I didn't know if, if Joe and, uh, and Doug were aware of that, um, whether that might affect what can and cannot be done with that money on that building? Just as an aside, if Joe is going to interact with them, uh, just a suggestion, I guess, and, and presenting that knowledge.
All right, I think that, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, yeah, just, I don't have anything really written specifically saying you can use it for a roof, you can use it for siding, yada, yada, yada. But, but the guy was, the guy was pretty clear that, um, we could use it for anything, uh, on the building that, uh, would preserve the historic value of the building. And, and I kind of, I gave him a few hypotheticals. I, you know, like, could you replace, I, I think I mentioned the, the shed, how the wood was falling apart, the stonework was kind of messed up. And he said, yeah, any, anything to do with the building. So I would be happy to email him with, um, the ideas that, um, that I've proposed here and ask him if that's acceptable.
That would be great. That would be great. All right.
Or, or talk to Lisa Ryan. That's the lady that, that Stan's talking about. It's Lisa Ryan. I, that's going right to the top of the chain. If you have any, any concerns or any questions, she's the lady we'll know of the whole, whole of wax.
Uh, the guy that emailed me is, signed the letter as, uh, Ben Doyle, President of the Preservation Trust, so.
Oh, he might have taken over from, uh, what's his face, that died.
Paul Brun.
Whatever, escapes me.
Paul Brun.
Paul Brun.
All right, so let's summarize here what we're doing. Joseph, you're going to contact the, uh, people who are providing the Ben Doyle or Lisa, Ben Doyle, who you've been emailing and find out what exactly we can spend the money on with some of the suggestions, with the shed, roof, the windows and, and such. And if you can get back to us, um, in written format before the 5th, then maybe we could come up with a, with a description of, uh, of, of work that, of work needs to be done and, and see if we can get, uh, Mr. Holden or someone else who's can get it done before, uh, August is through. Is that, is that where we're at right now?
Yeah, I, I absolutely will do that and I'll have that, um, I'll have that, uh, all emailed out to you prior to the, the.
And do include in that, um, hours to do some linseed work on the, on the woodwork and having a, a cleaning crew come in and wash walls and things of that sort, because it was sprayed with pesticides. And I think that's what Cynthia was referring to, if there's any contact that you have to be aware of. So, well, Joseph, thank you so much for, for picking a ball on this. I know it's, that money's been around for a while and I would love to see it being, uh, used to the benefit of the round schoolhouse. And I appreciate your involvement, Phil.
Well, thank you and thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph.
All right.
See ya. See ya.
All right, excellent. Um, next on our agenda, Mr. Noga. Um, Stan has sent, sent an email, uh, well, two emails, if you understand. One was about the, um, uh, fiber cable networking, which we'll talk about shortly. But the other was that he seems to have some time available and is interested in working with our Select Board again. So I invited him to come tonight and to talk to us about, uh, if he committed and we can put it on the agenda and vote next month, and that would work out really well. So Stan Noga, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate your interjecting my comments a moment ago as well. I, I just thought I, you know, I, I miss doing some things in town. Uh, I debated whether I should be a Lister, but I did for 29 years consecutive and I felt that was not something I should take up. And I really, at that time, didn't know what I wanted to do. But, uh, over the last 60 days, a lot of things have come more clear and I do have a little extra time. And I'd like to make that, uh, an offer that if you would like to fill that seat, I would be happy to, uh, formally, either through this method or in writing, uh, express the interest in occupying it or filling the role for the remainder of its term.
It is a one-year term. Shelby Brimmer, uh, had, was elected to a one-year term. So when, once it comes around, uh, recycling of the Select Board seats, um, yeah, that would be good. Anybody like to make a comment? I think, I will, first of all, Stan, I think you would make the board strong. I knew you have a lot of experience, um, and, uh, yeah, I would love to.
Yeah, I, I, in my last vision of the meeting that I involved myself with on the DV Fiber, I, I have a good sense, it's a good chemistry with the people on the board. And everyone seems to chip in and share the, the weight, the burden. And, uh, I thought that was a wonderful environment to, to involve myself in. And, uh, uh, I'm a little older, a little wiser than I used to be, so, uh, and that's just my opinion, Dot, you know, find out for yourself. Easier to get along with, let's put it that way.
That's a good thing.
I would welcome, I would welcome the consideration on everyone's part, uh, to participate. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Great, um, so I will add Stan's.
Say something.
Yes, did you want to say something, Bruce?
Yes, I would. Uh, this is your third trip, isn't it, Stan?
Uh, I think two came, one right after the other, but this would be the third, yep.
Well, God bless you because, uh, um, you've been indispensable part of this town for a very long time. And I'm just going to leave it at this, because if I go long-winded, I'm going to get killed by the chair. Uh, you've been indispensable a lot of ways in this town. You certainly have helped me in the past a lot, but I'll say, and I, and I hope everybody agrees to it, but I'll say if you do, if you do come on the board, like, kind of Dot, what kind of, kind of what Dot said, is it would make this Select Board a real powerhouse of experience and caring people. So I hope, I hope everybody goes along with it because I'm in favor of it. Thanks for doing it too, by the way.
Well, thank you, Bruce. You're very kind. I appreciate your comments and, uh, I think Dot, yourself, David, Gwen, uh, you're, you, you know, I, I think the feelings that you have expressed, excuse my adjusting the doiler that my cat just adjusted for me. Uh, you know, I, there is a tremendous amount of strength on the current board and I'd, I'd certainly be honored to participate.
It would be a help. We'd appreciate it, as far as I'm concerned.
All right, so if there's no objections, I will add Stan to our May 5th agenda for a vote, for appointment, for the seat. This is the first appointment for vacant seat that I've done. And so with my research, I needed to, this, put it on the agenda as a vote and I hadn't done it before. So, um, I apologize for not having that for tonight, but if that's all right with you, Stan, I will, uh, will, okay, very good. Well, thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to, uh, we have any unscheduled members of the public? There doesn't seem to be anybody in the waiting room. At this time, we will then move to the minutes from the April 7th, 2021 meeting and we will review over on page one. Does anybody see any mistakes or amendments or changes to the minutes from page one of three? I, I'll start off with.
I only have one, yes, at the time.
Yes, um, the meeting was called to order at 6:30 02. So that was just a little editing thing there, Peter. Okay. All right. Uh, anything else on page one?
Dot, is Building Commission update on one or two? I don't have it in front of me, but I wrote down the, the changes.
Um, for the, from the draft minutes?
Yeah. It says, it said Building Commission update on page one or two.
On page two.
Okay. I, I got stuff for page two.
All right. Nothing else on page one? Let's turn to page two.
Actually, no, Dot, sorry. Can you slow down just a second? Yep. On page one, under new business, the first section, the under Wyndham Solid Waste, just the very first sentence about midway through, Peter, three bins were lent with a memorandum of understanding. It's just L E N T, just a misspelling.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Welcome.
I thought they were all leaning up against something there.
Well, it is, yeah, that's true. It is, it is accurate anyway, but maybe might be slightly misleading to people.
Okay. Good catch, David. All right. Move on to page two of three. I noticed that in the second sentence, uh, Ms. Manager moved to authorize Helen Holt and Michael Bills to access, it should be Nemric, N E M R C. The first letter is in, as in Nancy.
Oh, got it.
Okay. And the other one that I wanted to point out is under summary update in reports. Uh, Mr. Tanzer reporting about the dogs. Fifty dogs are currently licensed. Historically, we have, uh, last year's set dog census was 125 dogs. Maybe we could change the wording on that because it says currently 125. So last year's dog census was 125. I would like to see that just edited. Does that make sense? Anybody else see anything on page two of three?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Bruce?
Under Building Commission update, the last sentence, it says particularly in the BMH, the meeting, Better Bro, Brookline Meeting House, should be, it should be Town Office, not, not Better, not Brookline Meeting House.
Oh, the Town Office, got some infestation.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there was a lot of different infestations being discussed.
Yeah, we were talking about a couple of them. It could have been confusing.
Well, it was the word guano, uh, but it's fine.
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, uh, the resignation on Shelby of March 34th. First time I've seen a year that was there was on March 34th.
Um, oh, you mean under?
Oh, it's under Communications.
Under email.
I apologize. It's probably on page three. I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm not looking at.
Three, under email, March 34th, 2021.
Okay, yes. Resignation from March 24th. Okay, so that's just a number. Thank you for catching that. Anything else on page two or three?
Is it March 3rd or 4th?
March, uh, 24th.
24th, got it.
Yes. That was the.
The only, yeah. The only thing I had on page three was just under the first communications, the first sentence. There was an email from Stan Nova, of course, should be Noga. Now that he's going to be on the board, we're going to have to spell his name right again, probably.
They all stole my name, right?
Yeah, you can still misspell Bruce is all you want.
Uh, yeah, I know.
Get Stan's right.
Mel.
Poetic license.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 7th, 2021 Select Board meeting as amended. Uh, may I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce Mel. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of cutting the minutes from April 20, from April 7th as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as amended. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
All right. Um, so we actually were able to move through the two pieces of new business. When we talked under the scheduled members of the public, so now we are at old business. Bruce, you were going to contact the Green Mountain Power Resiliency Zone people?
Yes.
Share with us. I know we talked about the questionnaire, but go ahead.
Yes. This is where I'm at. She responded back to me and wants to be put on the meeting for the 5th. But as of, because I've been so busy splitting wood, I haven't sent her, Dot, the, the, what I want to do is send her the questionnaire and ask her to see if she can call me. I think it would be really more expedient if I can cut to the chase a little more rather than him just taking up time in the meeting if it's not going to work. So I'm trying to initiate that conversation before the next meeting. And if she still wants to come and still thinks it's a good idea, have at it. But, um, she, uh, after she responds to the, to the questionnaire that, that we made up, Dot, you and I, uh, and what I just said, we'll see where it goes. But right now she would like to appear on the 5th and I'll keep you posted as to whether it's going to stay that way.
For the, for the board to understand the, uh, I think her name was Sally. She sent us a community profile questionnaire and Bruce worked on it and he called me up and went over a couple of questions on how to best answer them. So she, Bruce, you're going to send her that questionnaire and then we talk to her on the phone and see then, um, if she wants to be on the May 5th agenda. And you'll speak, I'll talk to you beforehand to make sure that that's going to happen before I type up the agenda. Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get on it next week sometime. I'm, I'm tied up till Tuesday. I want to get this wood under, under wraps, but after that I'll hit it and, uh, talk to her about it. I might even take a few minutes and send a message out to her. It doesn't take that much time. And I'll work it out. He'll have an answer well before you, before the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Right now, thank you, Bruce. All right. Right now I'm going to go on to item number two and I want to talk a little bit about, uh, the Wi-Fi before we ask Stan to talk about the broadband. Uh, at last, the last meeting, we decided not to act on the Wi-Fi hotspot donation opportunity. And, um, I, I really just really feel that I would like to, I would like the board to reconsider the, put, getting a Wi-Fi hotspot at Town Hall if at no cost. I would like to pursue this a little bit more, get on the list. Um, and if it is not going to be a fit after getting involved and filling out the, the form, then we can back out of it. But we can't get into the free Wi-Fi zone if we don't act sooner than later. So, um, I just would like to go, get the three of you Select Board members just, just to reconsider the, uh, to do some action. And I certainly don't mind following up on this a little bit more. Maybe Gwen can help me. You can sit down and make, go over some of the stuff. So, um, again, it's from Wyndham Regional Commission. It's the Vermont Department of Public Service, uh, and a, um, time sensitive, no password, um, Wi-Fi. We, um, we, David, one of the things that you pointed out was the possibility of slowing down the, uh, data transmission if there were people doing a lot of parking, you know, drug parking and going through their mail and such. But, you know, uh, in the same breath as talking about looking at broadband for underserved areas of Brookline, I, I think we really should consider, should, should consider having a Wi-Fi spot.
Sure. Can I say, can say, can I say a couple of things about that? First off, I didn't say anything about, and if we go back and listen, I think we can hear that. I was not saying that we shouldn't do this. Merely what I was clarifying was that it would, there is the potential that it could affect performance at the Town Office if someone were using it outside the Town Office. I was just stating about the realities of how broadband service works. The other thing I'll say is that I'm not, I was not opposed and am not opposed to the concept of having a open, non-password protected Wi-Fi hotspot at the Town Office. I personally think it is a waste of people's time and energy to get this additional booster because basically what the booster would do would be make the Wi-Fi available not only in the parking lot at the Town Office, but on the hill behind the Round Schoolhouse or, uh, down towards Sunny Rink's Field. I mean, it, it, we could currently open up our Wi-Fi hotspot at the Town Office and accomplish the goal of this without needing equipment provided by someone else. So that's my, the reason that I didn't think we should take them up on this because I don't think we need their equipment in order to accomplish what they've, what they're trying to do at the Town Office.
Okay. Gwen, did you want to say something?
I'm, I'm not really sure now. I'm a little confused.
If I could add something to that, uh, if you don't mind, Dot. Unfortunately, at the last meeting, I hadn't had the response from the person who was responsible for this Wi-Fi hotspot. And the day after the meeting, he finally contacted me and filled me in on what some of the, um, what some of the advantages of the Wi-Fi hotspot were. Uh, number one is that the range would be between 100 and 400 feet from the office. It would not require a password. And again, it's, I, I voiced some of the concerns that I had heard at the Select Board meeting. And he said he didn't feel that it would, um, slow down any of the, uh, town's, um, data transmissions or so forth. And, um, he said basically it was just the opportunity for the town to sign up for it. And then that if they sign up for it, they would at least have a voice in it. If they didn't sign up, they would not have any voice whatsoever. So if the, if the town elects to sign up for this, uh, Wi-Fi hotspot, they still will have the opportunity to say yea or nay down the road. The only equipment that's involved is basically a repeater that would be placed on the pole and the town would be the person responsible for the payment. And as I've said, the town, and I spoke to him, I said, the town does not pay for Wi-Fi because it's a currency extended to us from Comcast. And he said, that would be just as fine. That's, that's well. So those are some of the answers that I got from the person after the meeting.
Right. And I found that's some similar information as well. Um, Bruce? Did you want to say?
No, I, you want to pursue it? Dot, where, where are you at with it? You kind of showed that you're, you're finding out some more answers, but it appears that guy got a bunch.
Yeah, I, I would like to, to, uh, contact them, fill out the community, the, another community profile. Um, and see, uh, how large is the repeater? What kind of pole do they need to have it installed on? I don't really know what that is. Um, but I'd rather, I'd rather go work on it. Uh, this way, when we add, um, we're added to the state map of Wi-Fi hotspots, we wouldn't have a password protected spot. And David, you said we could do it unprotected. I don't know. That, I don't know. I'm, I'm a little confused. I'd like to, I'd like to follow up on it and come back to the board, uh.
Sure. Then let's, then I guess I'd say let's go ahead and do it.
Okay.
It's ultimately, it's their money, money, not ours. I think if they, if they were to look at this, at our exact situation, I would think that they would believe that this is a waste of their money. But that's up to them to decide, not us. I'm fine with it.
Okay. So I'm just going to go and contact them and do the paperwork and return the, and, and get on a list if possible and, and, uh, share what I find out with the Select Board. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, David, I'm sorry. I forgot that I didn't put the salt sand shed and, and I saw it and I took it off the list and when I redid the, 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 uh, paperwork because I don't know why. Go ahead, David.
That's fine. I mean, there's not a whole lot to report at the moment. Um, I'd asked, um, Archie and Mark to take a look through the draft plans and paperwork that Ron Bell had somewhat finalized that before it goes to V-Trans for V-Trans to approve it. Um, I think those guys were looking through it, but I haven't heard anything from them. Um, the, the situation is this. New Fane has a salt sand shed project going on at the same time as ours. It was also designed by Ron Bell. It is a very similar project to ours, except a little bit bigger. Um, their plans are currently with V-Trans for review about not just the plans, but more so the bid paperwork to make sure that it follows all of the wording that the state requires and that the federal government requires for the grant, stuff like that. The suggestion of our Chris Hunt from V-Trans, who is our V-Trans Project Manager on this, is for us to basically hold off on submitting our plans to V-Trans until he sees the feedback come back for New Fane's plans because he believes many of the same changes that V-Trans will demand of, the New Fane plans will also apply to ours. And then presumably we can get Ron to change all of those things at the same time. And we can then resubmit, we can submit ours to V-Trans. And Chris Hunt thinks he can get a decision very quickly from V-Trans on that. So we're in sort of a bit of a holding pattern right now, waiting to know what needs to be changed. There's a separate thing though, that we need to have on our radar. We don't yet know whether this is an issue, but as most people will know, construction prices and the prices of lumber worldwide have, are astronomically higher than they were in the past. It is entirely possible that, and we need to be prepared for this potentiality. It's entirely possible that when we ultimately go to put this out to bid, and there's no way for us to know until we actually get the bid paperwork together from Ron, it's approved and we're then able to publish it for proposals, we might get responses which are far higher than we ever dreamed they would be for this project. To the point where we realistically, we might not be able to afford to do this right now given the pandemic induced inflated pricing. V-Trans, Chris Hunt, our Project Manager at V-Trans is aware of this and it has concerns about this himself. He believes that if that were to be the case, we have the possibility, though we don't know if we'll need to do this, but we would have the possibility to wait and essentially put it out to bid again next year to see if we get more realistic pricing. Our deadline technically for completing this grant is 2022, is June of 2022. But informally, we believe, he believes that as long as we would continue down the road of doing the project, even if we needed to hold off because we are waiting for pricing to relax, he believes we could get an extension without much difficulty. Again, we don't know whether will, that will be the situation will, but it's, it's something we need to have in our minds as a possible thing that we might have to deal with at some point. Um, the other problem is because of how long all this has taken, whether we could actually get bids to realistically be able to do this before winter remains to be seen. But it's, again, it's something we won't know until we get to the point of actually being able to put bids out. So that's kind of it. That's kind of where things stand at the moment.
Uh, your contact.
Anybody have any questions? Sorry, go ahead, Dot.
Uh, your contact with Archie, was it, did you speak to him or you left a message or an email?
I have not, well, I've, I've emailed Archie all the details a few weeks ago. I spoke with Mark a couple of weeks ago and he said he and Archie were getting together to go through the, I'll, I'll be honest, I, I don't know that there's a lot of opportunity, quite frankly, for us to change much about the plans at this point anyway. Uh, I mostly wanted those guys to review it from the standpoint of, uh, well, quite frankly, when New Fane reviewed, I found a few mistakes of just contact details and things like that. I believe that New Fane also found a bunch of similar things. I quite frankly, wanted someone who was more familiar with the project, which Archie and Mark have been involved and discussed it with Ron years ago. I wanted someone who was more intimately familiar with the construction aspect of it to just take a look at them, to see if anything jumped out as being glaringly wrong. V-Trans will also be reviewing. V-Trans will also be reviewing these things as well. So it's, you know, we're not, we're not expected to be reviewing them for construction details.
Yeah. Perfect. Oh, thank you very much. That, that sounds great. Does anybody else have any questions for David regarding the salt sand shed?
No.
I hope we do can, if we can't get it done this year because the, the cost of lumber, I, I agree, has gone way up. Um, I did a little project and I was like, it was quite a bit more than I expected. So if we could get an extension, uh, if we need to for the, that past June 20, 2022, that would be great. All right.
Yeah. I mean, that of course assumes that prices would go down in next year, which they may or may not do. I mean, a, at some point, we will, we may be put in the situation where we have to just figure out how much we can afford to spend on it, quite frankly, given our match. I mean, as it is, I think it's highly likely that this is going to be a more expensive construction project under any circumstances than what it was originally envisioned a few years ago when we got this grant. So our match, our 20% match of that could end up being quite a bit higher than we expected it to be. So that's all.
Thank you so much for, for following up on that. Would you like me to add this to the next meeting or?
Um, let's, let's wait and see. I mean, it, it sort of depends on what we, what gets, what comes back from the state how quickly. And I'm not sure how quickly we're, we'll be hearing more.
All right. Excellent. Thank you again. All right, David, you want to go segue right into Greenup Day?
Uh, sure. So, um, hey Guy, have we, have you seen bags arrive by any chance from the state yet? Or heard anything about bags?
Uh, yes, the bags have arrived, uh, late Friday afternoon. And I was in a conversation with Dot and I didn't, I wasn't sure whether to announce that with Julie as a listserv thing because I wasn't sure if we had a Greenup Day coordinator yet.
Um, I think that we have a coordinator. Um, I am having a phone conversation with, um, a gentleman named, uh, Tim or Tim, I think he goes by Timbo, uh, Madalena Lucy, who lives on Grassy Brook Road somewhere. Oh, I have to admit, I've never met the gentleman.
What is his name?
He lives in, um, they rent the Mrs. Nicholson's property just beyond the town office.
Oh, okay. Um, so he, he is interested in and seems to think that he's got the time available to help coordinate this year. So he and I are going to chat on Friday and I'm going to kind of just suggest to him how we go about doing that. Um, and so my assumption is we'll, you know, we'll be doing something on May 1st in some fashion.
All right.
Have you been able to contact, uh, Archie Clark? Is he still going to put his truck down there and collect the bags for us?
Um, I have not spoken to Archie or to Mark, but I'm, I'll, well, again, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying not to be the one who's coordinating because I said I wasn't going to coordinate it. So, uh, but the longer we go without somebody else doing, yeah, I may, if, if I have an opportunity, I'll speak to Archie and, and/or Mark, or I'll ask, um, Tim to reach out to them first. I, I can't imagine that they wouldn't do what they've normally done. I'm assuming that they will for now.
I agree with you. He's done it for so many years. So I would, um, I'm hoping that maybe either you or Dot will have Julie send a blast out that we do have the green up bag, uh, green up bags at the town office and they are available during regular business hours.
Yeah. Um, so David, you want me to do an email blast or do you want to wait till Friday?
Um, well, I mean, I, I guess I'll say I'm not going to be sending an email blast regardless. So, um, uh, if you, if you feel like sending out an email just saying there are green up bags available, if people want to do stuff, uh, but separately, this guy or somebody's going to have to try to figure out who's doing what as far as where they're collecting things. But, um, there's no harm in telling people that there are bags available. Sure.
Okay. So I will, I, I'll work up an email, uh, for, for Julie about the bags. And, um, certainly do pass along my phone number to Tim and, uh, if, if he has any questions, and I know you're, you're very busy, but if, if he has questions and you're not available, I can see if I can answer any for him.
Cool. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Excellent. No, I appreciate it. We've been doing Greenup Day. It's important and, uh, hopefully it won't snow.
Yeah, right.
Anything else on the, uh, under you business at this time, oh, business at this time? All right. Now we'll go move on to summary updates and reports. Uh, Mr. Tanza, Town Clerk Report. What's new?
As, as usual, the town office has been rather busy with the title searches and, um, being the, uh, the tax season is in full blast right now. Many people are calling and looking for their tax bills and so forth. We have registered 61 dogs. And again, there's been no push to, uh, get people to do it sooner because as you're aware, the emergency declared by Governor Scott is still in effect until at least May 15th. So, uh, consequently, we just have to kind of come see, come saw. But hopefully people will get their dogs registered. Other than that, things are just, uh, going along pretty well.
Okay. And our, uh, the, uh, the, the, the listers are, the new listers that are working through the, um, on, on our grand list is, was able to gain access to what they needed to gain access to?
Uh, yes, I've been working with Helen and Mike, uh, Bills also. And, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're well indoctrinated. They know what they have to do. And there are a number of issues that they are, uh, uh, being, uh, aware of and taken care of. But, uh, I'd say they're doing a great job and, um, everything is going as well as we could expect. In fact, I'm really grateful for them.
Yeah. For sure.
Excellent. All right. Very good. Thank you. Um, I put this on here after the Town Clerk Report and put Select Board Chair Report. Uh, there may be times that I might need to share things. I mean, as a cemetery commissioner, I can tell you that we sold two cemetery plots and that we, uh, which is good because the money needs to replenish the coffers for that. Um, the other thing, um, what was this going to say? Cemetery, select board, money. See, when I don't write it down, it goes out of my head. I know what it was and we'll, we'll talk about this later on. Um, I was going through the, um, current period, fiscal period, uh, nine and 10 for our finances. And when I was at the town hall, it was yesterday, the day before yesterday, both Samara was there, Samara was there, Mike Masters was there and Judy, uh, Judy was there. And I asked a couple of questions about some of the budget line items that were showing up like 220, 72% above the actual amount. And I did get some of the answers. There was, she, um, because, so she's explained it to me then, and, uh, but there were some other items, especially again, in the highway department where, uh, like the winter contract services was at 33,000. That's the amount of money that we put in for winter plowing. But it appears that we spent like $51,000 and she was explaining how that would have been growl that was put on during mud season. And in the past, she says, just the way that the, uh, the accounts were being balanced and some things need to be changed out. So she recognized that there was some confusion and, uh, I'm going to meet with her again and go over it. And in fact, I put on the agenda for May, um, just the preliminary review over those budgetary line items that look like they're going to cause a deficit, which she thinks is an error in what she put into the NEMR, into the program. So we want to get that cleared up since the fiscal year does end in, uh, June 30th. So that's, that was my select board, my, my, uh, yeah. Okay. Um, next is, oh, and the other thing was, um, uh, I did sign the contract for the over the rail mower, um, for May 31st through June four, June 4th, uh, for the one week of work. And I spoke with Michael Masters about getting, sending our insurance writer to the lease operator, the, the people who are releasing us the, uh, equipment. So that's also been taken care of as well. Okay. Um, building commissioners, that's all for me. Building Commissioners Report, Bruce, do you have some things you want to talk about? Like, you know, the town hall and the mice?
Yeah, I'll start with, I'll start with my favorite building first, our wonderful, wonderful school. Um, just wanted to report that the, uh, um, Dompier came yesterday, installed the time, the light timer for the outside, took about an hour plus the cost of the unit. So that's done. The water softener system was installed last Friday. That's done. When I came in yesterday to, um, monitor what, uh, Dompier was doing, Sean from Dompier, I noticed that the UV system was flawless for once. Um, there was no issues at all. Um, back last Friday when Mark, Mark and I were there prior to, prior to Lynnwell, Linewell showing up to do the water softener. So we were able to Mickey Mouse around with literally with the UV system and we both, both figured it out. We have really good explanations on how to, how to service the unit. I feel 95% sure that we can solve any problem or, or figure out what's going on with the unit when it happens. And we can, we can maintain and service it without spending a hundred dollars a pop for a plumber to come in. So, um, Friday, I believe Friday, somewhere throughout this weekend because, um, Linewell recommended that I let the system run for a week just to flush out any of the old iron and calcium, any of the hard water before I unplug one of the units, which I'm going to do to see how it works with just the one. And if that does, then that more than halves our maintenance, like I said to you last time. Not only the cost of the bulbs and, and the equipment which I would buy rather than the plumber would buying, but also, um, there would be, uh, half the system running as opposed to both of them running. And we could actually start swapping every six months, the bulbs from one to another. Takes five minutes and maybe save some time on the bulbs. Um, and, uh, I'm looking for a big decrease in maintenance expense on that system. Okay. The only thing I see left with that building to do now is I'm hoping that I can get Dave Zosko's retired, uh, to get him in for one more little, little, little thing to, to straighten out one, one window, one window cord that, that broke. But other than that, we're done. My next, my next, um, move with the, with the school is to set up a, a six month maintenance schedule of which I've talked at great length with Mark about it. He's all included on it. And I'd say for all intents and purposes, for the first time in seven years, we're pretty much under control of that building.
Amen.
Amen. Okay. Now off to the, um, the town office. Um, I spent a little bit of time reading on the net about what you should do and what you shouldn't do with, with the mouse poops. But I went right into the CDC and I don't think we should make a decision tonight. What I would like to do is to tell you what I found out and ask all if you could just, um, pull up the CDC recommendation for cleaning up after rodents. It's really, if I can find it, it's really easy to find. But I'll just tell you basically what they said in a nutshell. You have to ventilate the place. You can't stir up any mouse poops in the air. You can get HPS, hantavirus, and it's a, it's an airborne virus that you can breathe and it wouldn't be for you. Uh, you need the filters, you need to be, you have to be removed completely. Uh, it has to be done the right way. A lot of times, the best way to do it, and you'd read it in the article, is you kind of have to saturate it all with, with a, a solution of ten, ten to one water to bleach, let it soak for five minutes and then pick it up with, with towels. But of course, ServPro has the professional way of doing it. Um, and after, I read the whole article and, and basically what they said is, uh, what you got to do first, and this is where I'm going to bring Gwen in, is you got to try and seal all the, the issues first and wait a week or two and see if you have any more mice coming in. And this is where my mice killer Gwen can tell me how she's making out with that. Um, and, um, I have some suggestions to make that could do that. I'll have Mark do it. Seal the bulkhead, put in a gutter to keep the water from coming in that basement. Um, and sealing around the foundation of the, of the building and going in one more time to look to see. I think I noticed one more spot in there I didn't get with, with insulation to plug up a hole, uh, towards where the two buildings come together. But that has to be done first, wait a couple of weeks, everything I just said. And then if we stopped it, then you meet, uh, then you clean up, then you mediate, uh, remediate the, um, all the, all the mouse poops. So again, I would think that maybe we should think about it for two weeks. If you, I would really like everybody to read this article, uh, from the CDC, if you would. Uh, it's pretty short. It's about five minutes. And then we can all discuss it maybe next time. Um, because I'm not taking lightly that, that ServPro wants 2,300 buck, I think it's 2,300 bucks I got here to clean that all up. And I was a little upset with him because he didn't give me a response about Brown Schoolhouse as well, but I didn't take that up with him. But I believe the total's 23, 27. And that's a lot of money. But, um, um, rather that than have somebody get sick. Uh, so that's where I'm at with that. But I'm hoping, buddy wants to make a comment. Uh, but first I would like to ask Gwen how she's making out, if she's getting more mice in there and how prevalent it is.
We got two more.
Okay.
Well, I have to have a heart trap, so I get rid, I take them for a ride.
You take it for a ride? Are you two in, what period of time?
We did, we did get a couple more, but I'm not setting it every day because that means I have to go to the office every day to check it.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. So why don't we just, uh, I was, I was covering, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Mark. I'm going to see if I can get him to do the things I just requested. And then, um, in the meantime, we could think about all this. I'll send an email out to ServPro, tell them we're still thinking about it, but we could, because we realize we have to stop the problem first before we clean up the mess. And, uh, if I can get Mark to help us out and to do those things I just mentioned, we'll see how that works. And if I, and if I finally, if we finally stop it, which I think we can, I, I feel confident we can stop the infestation. It seems to be a little on the minor side right now as opposed to last fall when you were complaining a great deal. So if we can stop them from coming in, then if the board wants to realize doing this, we do it then. That's where I'm at with it.
Thank you, Bruce. That's great. That's a lot of work. And I know you and Mark have been quite busy with that. That's much appreciated.
That's okay.
It has been a little better. Last year we got 22 mice.
Oh, Jesus. Well, I did clog some stuff up, but I, I, I didn't get it all. I said principally that bulkhead, Gwen. And along, along the foundation should be sealed with foam. Um, and I think all your, all your infestation is coming from the north side. I don't believe it's coming from the south side or the other two, or the, um, or the west side, the, the, the west side. I think it's coming, the open spots that were coming from the, the new part of the addition where the select board meets and the bulkhead area and around there. And ServPro seemed to agree with me on that, uh, because we didn't see too much of any of it on the south side of the building facing the driveway.
Okay, perfect. All right. Anything else, Bruce?
No. So again, if I can request you all, please take a minute to pull up the CDC recommendations. It's under, and just read it so we can discuss it further. Under cleaning up after rodents, it's quite specific. Takes about five, seven, eight minutes to read and then everybody will be pretty much abreast on it. We can, we can discuss how, how to go forward. But the first thing we got to do is seal the place. And then as far as cleaning up, that's what this is about.
Bruce, I did read that report and it was pretty extensive. And, uh, to be honest with you, I didn't realize the ramifications of the mouse droppings that we have in our office. And I can only tell you that in the last 10 or 12 years, we're pretty fortunate that no one did get sick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, I'm, I've, I'm under the opinion generally that we don't build buildings and forget about them. If we've got a problem, we should have a regular maintenance schedule. I think we should have a regular cleaning schedule for the Round Schoolhouse. I can go on and on, on and on, but I'm not going to right now. But you get, you get my point. And as far as, I have, I have a real big problem with you folks being in that building all that time with that building up to, when I saw how much there was downstairs, I said, holy, you know what the other word is? And I can't, I, I can't in, in, in good, good mind not report to you all and come, and come up with some kind of a suggestion to, to put an end to it.
All right. Very good. Now, pretty much appreciated.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Mark Bills is not here this evening for highway and road supervisor report. I think he gave us, uh, what he could, uh, the last meeting. And then the only thing that I told you was I did speak to Mark about the Fairfield or HP Fairfield, uh, lease that we're getting for the mower in May, May, June. All right. Anything else on, um, reports? Anybody else want to share anything?
No, I just want to make one, one last comment. Again, I'm going to push this up real hard. Mark's done a wonderful job. I mean, he demands an expense, but he's doing everything. I mean, he demands an expense, but he's doing everything I ask of him. He helped me immensely with the school. Uh, and it's because of him in part that we're, 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 excuse me, where we're at with that school right now. Because of what he, because of his help. That's it.
All right. Much appreciated. And when you see him say it, anybody who sees Mark, uh, that would be something nice to, to.
Yes, it would be. I, I agree.
Okay. Well, we're, I think we're ahead of schedule here. We moved down into communications. I shared with you the email from Stan Noga. I shared with you an email, uh, from Sally Cuts requesting information about the listers. I think I. Forwarded to you my response that I forward to everybody, the response I sent to Sally. Yes, okay. Um, asked her for if she was interested and what her experience level was and that, um. Uh, the two that we hired, we're gonna reevaluate their positions at the end of the fiscal year. But I haven't heard back from Sally after that. Uh, we got a thank you note from Camilla Roberts from the Windmill Hill Pinnacle Association. And I told you that the, uh, for the fourth time, the mower lease was signed. There was no regular mail. I went and went through that. That seems to be a, a light day today, but now we can move on to our pay orders.
Dot?
Yes.
Excuse me, I just have a question.
Yes.
Is Sally Cuts related to Bruce Cuts that died in the fire? I just wanted to address myself. I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
How is she related?
That's his wife.
That's his wife. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, at this time I make a motion that the, uh, that we approve the check warrant report. Number twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen for, uh. Payroll in the amount of one thousand seven hundred forty dollars and eighty-six cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen dated. April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. In the amount of one thousand seven hundred forty dollars and eighty-six cents, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, accounts payable dated. April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Pay, uh, uh, accounts payable order number, warrant number twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen. In the amount of five thousand three hundred seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents. May I have a second? Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable dated four twenty-one twenty-one. Number twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen for five thousand three hundred seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, pay, the accounts payable will be accepted. Okay, um. All right, for the agenda for the next meeting, which is Wednesday, May fifth, I have on my list. The appointment of Stan Noga to the Select Board's vacant seat. Joseph Dutton with an update on the Round Schoolhouse Grant. Uh, Bruce Mello may or may not have invited, uh, Green Mountain Power Resiliency Zone Representative to speak to us. If it's a relevant project for, uh, the, uh, Town of Brookline. I will report on the, uh, wifi town hall wifi hotspot. And is there anything else I am missing? Oh, green up day maybe? Yes, green up day. No, well, green up day will be over by then.
Right.
Green up day is May first.
All right. If there's anything else that you, uh, would like me to put on the agenda, don't hesitate to call me at home or send me an email. Um, and I will, you know, stop in the office and check on things as, as the time goes on. Is there anything else right now that anyone would like to say?
Dot, uh, we should add a final discussion about this cleaning up of the town office so we can cover a method going forward. I'll try to talk to, um, Mark in the meantime, see where he's at with it, but I don't think, it's not major work that I'm asking him to do, so it shouldn't be much of a problem.
Okay, so you can always do that under the Building Commission, but the Town Office cleanup and.
I can do that.
The recycling containers. I did speak with Michael Masters. He contacted our insurance carrier. He's gonna send me in writing what they said, but, uh, we believe that we will be insured if the, uh. If the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District transfers the ownership of this, of the containers to us. And we hold on to them until we decide if we're going to transfer them to, let's say Triple T. Uh, we'll discuss that at the next meeting, but, uh, otherwise. Oh, and I also have on here twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year preliminary review of budget line items. I was, like I said, I was a little concerned of things that showed to be, uh, overextended, but Samara. It might have been just some, some entry errors and we need to correct those right away. So, all right. At this, if there's nothing else.
Can I just add one thing? Uh, I just wanted to let people know that the, uh, rabies clinic, uh, is still in limbo. We're trying for May or June. Uh, depending on weather and whether the Dr. Miles will be available. But there's also another opportunity tractor warehouse in Hinsdale, New Hampshire. If people need to have their rabies shot, they have, they're having two clinics there. Uh, I think people would have to call to find out the times and the date, but, uh, it's in the near future.
You know, Guy, I think when I, I think I'll do that, I'm, I'm gonna have Julie send that an email blast about having the green up bags available. I'll also remind people that it's a good idea to get their dogs registered.
Uh-oh. Hello?
I lost you, Dot. Uh, you see.
You're lost.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Dot, hang on one, one second. I would just, whatever the last thing was that you said, we didn't hear it because your. Microphone cut out for a little bit. Whatever the last thing you said after sending an email to Julie, I think you were saying?
Uh, I said I was gonna send an email to Julie to put out information that the green up bags were here. That it'd be, uh, uh, for the dog owners in town should consider registering their dogs sooner rather than later. And that while we don't know when the New Brook Rabies Clinic is going to be held, I'll research and post the time and date for the Tractor Supply. Uh, company in Hinsdale, they're gonna be having a clinic. So people can take advantage of that. You don't have to be a. Vermont, a New Hampshire resident to get, a rabies shot is good anywhere. So those are the three things I'll have Julie do. Dogs, rabies clinic and green up day.
Okay, cool. That's great. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So I made a motion. Bruce, you, you motioned. Can I have a second on the motion for adjournment?
A second.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjourning this evening's meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so be it. The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-nine ahead of time.